WDEV News presents. The regular monthly meeting of the Fintress County Commission. The Fintress County Commission meets the third Monday of each month and you can see it live on Channel 12 Cable TV. It's a presentation of the Union Bank of Jamestown and Clark Range, your reliable banking partner since 1904.
For more than a century, Union Bank has been serving the people of Fintress County. Now, as we begin a new chapter in our history of service, we want to take this opportunity to reassure you that while our building may be new, we're still the same friendly people you have known for years. Union Bank, the same people, the same goals, and the same commitment to you. Union Bank, your locally owned hometown bank for more than a century, growing to meet your needs. Equuson Leader, Member FDIC.
We'll call this meeting to order. Please stand for the presentation of colors by the York Institute Junior ROTC. Remain standing for the pledge of the flag by Commissioner Mickey McDonald and opening prayer by Commissioner Justin Miller.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Those kind and gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for a good day that you've given us all, Lord, and thank you for the turnout here at the meeting tonight, Lord. Thank you for all the citizens being involved in their county, Lord. Pray for each commissioner up here, Lord, that we'd make the right decisions, the decisions best pleasing to you. God, I pray that you keep everybody safe as they go home, keep us safe at our jobs and places of business. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Okay, Ms. Merrill, if you'd care to read the roll.
Meek Nat Donnel.
Here.
Justin Miller.
Here.
Rod Williams.
Here.
Kim Davidson.
Here.
Benny Hughes.
Here.
Robert Cooper.
Here.
Lester Gooding.
Here!
Leon Stapp.
Here.
Larry Cooper.
Here.
Wade Matthews.
Here.
All present, consideration of approvals of the minutes from the December 16th regular meeting and the January 6th special call meeting. Everyone's had time to look over those, I hope. Do I hear a motion on it?
So moved. I have a correction on item number... Number 12.
My regular monthly meeting, item number 12. Consideration of acceptance of the FY ending audit report as presented by the Fintress County Audit Committee. Phil Torres, is that it, Lester?
That's it. It wasn't a form of a motion, but I did ask that all the elected officials attend the findings of the audit committee and they put it down to attend all the commission meetings.
I hear a motion to make that correction.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Miller, sent by Commissioner Hughes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary likewise. Commissioner Williams made a motion to accept the approval of the minutes. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Sent by Commissioner Lester Gooding. Roll call, vote please.
Anthony.
Ford.
Justin.
Ford.
Rod.
Ford.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Motion passes, 10-4, none against. Consideration of approval of notaries, we have four new ones and five renewals. Marva Wright. Keta Peters. Christine Williams. Cory Bowden. Ginger Norman. Melissa Brown. Kay Bridges. Tammy Sims. Doug Jones.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion been made by Commissioner Lester Gooding to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wade Matthews. Roll call, please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Ford.
Rod.
Ford.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
10-4, none against.
10-4 and none against. Our next item will be presentation of awards to retired fire department chief and assistant chief. Over the history of the Fintress County Fire Department, we've had three chiefs, fire chiefs, since about 1950, 1952. Frank or Hollis one, you can correct me if I'm wrong there. The first one that we'll honor tonight will be Alan Cotton Dayhoff. His family will be here to receive that. The second one will be Frank Campbell. The next one will be Hollis Crabtree, and I'm not sure if Scott is here or not, I don't see him. So if y'all would come up to the front. Don't believe Scott's here. The first one here we'll give tonight will be to the family of Arthur Cotton Dayhoff. He was on the Fire Department and it's all volunteer Fire Department, is what it is. So, this here reads, "Presented to the family of Arthur Cotton Dayhoff, 1952 to 1982. In grateful recognition of Cotton's 30 years of service to the citizens of Fintress County as a dedicated member of the Fire Department and Cotton's service as fire chief, Fintress County will be forever grateful for his sacrifice and time of service. Presented the 27th day of January by the Fintress County Commission." The second one. Mr. Frank Campbell. In grateful recognition of your 41 years of service to the citizens of Fintress County as a dedicated member of the Fire Department and your 19 years of service as fire chief, Fintress County will be forever grateful for your sacrifice and time of service. Presented by Fintress County Commission this 27th day of January 2020. Frank, thank you very much. Hollis Crabtree. 1967 to 2019. In grateful recognition of your 52 years, over a half a century of service, of volunteer service. To the citizens of Fintress County as a dedicated member of the Fire Department and your 18 years of service as fire chief, Fintress County will be forever grateful for your sacrifice of time and service. Presented by the Fintress County Commission this 27th day, January 2020. With those and you add Scott's in, that's about 100 and little over 152 years of volunteer service. That's pretty big. It's like all of our EMS services, sheriff's department, rescue squad, ambulance service, rescue squad, oh, it's a... Well, I was served with them for a little over 30 years and in about nine or 10 years of it, there's about 12 or so got off, you know, sat down and that's remember somebody else, but they've seen a lot of stuff. It never gets too cold for any of our emergency services. It may be 2 or 3 o'clock in the morning, you crawl out of that bed. Summertime, you know, you're in the woods, these brush fires and stuff. And it's a big thing, you know, 52 years, 41 years, 40 years, it's a lot of volunteer. And it's very much appreciative, I believe, on the county commission's part, my part, and the citizens of Fintress County. Thank you all very much. You sure might. Congratulate Jimmy Johnson, he was on for how many years?
About 30.
But we certainly appreciate it all very much, we really do, in all of our emergency services. Our next, our next item of business is the consideration of an appointment of the Fintress County Fire Chief. For years, it... The fire chief, when he stopped, the assistant chief would move up. And it's been like that for several years until 2010. And the state of Tennessee says that the county, Murray County Executive, must appoint the assistant chief and also the fire chief. Fire chief that we'll appoint and the assistant chief will be responsible for, let's see, 82 active firemen, over a million dollars worth of equipment, and that's not counting the buildings. That's not buildings, the property that we have. On the September 12th, appointed Mr. Gary Reagan as assistant chief. And he has 28 years of service, he started in 1991. And the next gentleman, he started in 1990. He's helped the county and the city of Allen gain over $2 million worth of grants. And I'm going to appoint, with the approval of the county court tonight, Mr. Gary Reagan, assistant chief, and Mr. Larry Cooper as fire chief of Fintress County. And so, at this time, I'm asking for a motion of approval.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Commissioner Lester Gooding to approve these two gentlemen, or the fire chiefs this time. And second by Commissioner Benny Hughes. Roll call, vote please.
Mickey.
Against.
Justin.
Can you come back to me?
I sure will, I'd be happy to.
Rod.
Ford.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Pass.
Wade.
Four.
Justin.
We'll have to pass because I didn't get a question in there before we voted.
Well, it's time for a question right now, if you want to talk. It's under discussion.
I guess my question would have been, how did you go, how did we go about nominating these two people?
Because it doesn't say about nominating, it says that I have to appoint.
Okay.
At the, when we appointed Gary that night, I asked the captains if they had anybody to turn in, to turn him in to me.
Okay.
I didn't get any. I had one person to call and another person came in and sat down. If we need any help, he would be glad to, but he wasn't campaigning for fire chief.
And was there, is there, I guess my next question would have been, would there have been any conflict ventures?
No, I already checked on that before I would do anything like this anyway.
Okay.
So there's no conflict ventures, just as like any employee working for the county that wants to be commissioner or anything. According to CTAS, if you have a question, any other you want to have a question, you can call them and see, but I'll call them and check with it, so.
Okay.
So long as he abstains from voting.
As long as he abstains from voting on the Fire Department's budget.
Okay. Ford.
So you change your vote to four?
Four.
So that'll be 9-4 and one against, correct?
Correct.
One pass.
9-4, one pass and one against. Motion passes.
It'd be 8-4.
8-4, one pass and one against. Motion passes. The next will be the consideration of the appointment of the Fintress County Assistant Fire Chief, which is Gary Reagan. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Commissioner Kim Davidson made the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lester Gooding. Any discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mickey.
Against.
Justin.
Ford.
Rod.
Ford.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Pass.
Wade.
Four.
8-4, one pass and one against.
Motion passes. Item number 11. Consideration of approval of the bid proposal in regards of the CDBG fire tanker grant. Amanda Maynard, if you could explain that, please.
Hello, yes, it seems very fitting that we discuss this bid opening tonight since we're honoring all of our fire chiefs, it's very fitting. As you know, in 2019, we were awarded a community development block grant for a fire tanker for the county. We, and y'all may have to help me, we've been without a tanker, we've had to borrow others tankers for several years now, so it is time that we have our own. We opened bids last Wednesday, the low bid was Deep South Fire. And that was for $246,000, well within our budget. It will leave us $34,500 to purchase turnout gear. So, still within our budget. Those specs have been, the bid was looked over and compared to our specs and it meets the specs, so it is good in that area.
Anything else?
Is this the grant purchasing this truck, or?
Yes.
I mean, we have a match.
How much we?
Yeah, our match, oh goodness. Our match is $28,000.
I think that's what it is.
Yes, our grant is 263, roughly, with a total project cost being 299.
We actually budgeted $10,000 of that 28,000 this year. So next year, we'll only have to budget 18,000. So we didn't have to do the 28,000 in one year.
We actually passed the resolution on it too, didn't we?
Yes, we did.
And so we plan on purchasing the truck next?
It'll take 200 days for them to...
Okay, so it'll be in the next budget.
The other 18,000 will be in the next year's budget, correct?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion been made to approve the fire tanker grant, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robert Cooper.
Which bid did you take? Did you just want to take the low bid?
Yes.
We just make, we need to make sure that we say that the record shows that it's the low bid.
To Deep South.
Deep South bid, yes.
And the specs?
Yes, they...
I mean, we're all apples to apples on all these bids.
Yes.
Any more discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Ford.
Rod.
Ford.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Pass.
Wade.
Four.
9-4, one pass.
9-4, one pass, motion passes. Would I say something to, back to the...
Thank you.
You're welcome. On the Fire Department, if the captains would wait just for a little bit after this meeting tonight and meet in the ECD room, I'd very much appreciate it. Item number 12. Consideration of approval of resolution 2020-01 to allow the Fintress County Board of the Commission the ability to participate in the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System. Becky, if you care to go over that.
So we're going to revisit commission being able to, being eligible to participate in Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System and things, we talked a little bit about that last month. There's one of four options you can choose, whether it is... I think on the resolution, the numbers have been tweaked just a little bit, I got a new resolution from TCRS today. You have the choices of $7 a month, $8 a month, 1635 a month, or 2339 a month as your, as your benefit for each year of service for the commission, for the commission that you have. So, do you guys have questions for me?
There is a county match in this after retirement or whatever, right?
So, what that entails is the commission or an employee contributes 5% of their gross wages and then the county matches based on an actuarial equation and the state gives us what the county has to match for any of our employees. Currently, it's 5.87%.
How long do you have to, be a commissioner or whatever, to be vested?
Any employee has to have 60 months of service or five years to be vested, to be eligible for a benefit.
You can buy it back in, you can buy your years back too, correct?
You can, there will be a separate resolution to buy back service.
Any more, any more questions for Becky?
No, this is the same one that we didn't fill the last time and we're bringing it back.
Well, there were several options put in front of us and we only, which one was it that we actually?
Actually, the motion was the D, 2339. Well, then it was 22...
95.
95, it's changed by just a few cents.
Or somebody that voted against the last one could bring it back up, correct?
That's correct.
And I voted against it last time, but this time I will make the motion and what's the consent of the commissioners on which option?
Initially, I made the motion, first round is the D option, $20 something dollar. That's my consensus.
Well, that'd be my motion then to, because that's what I voted against the last time and I'll make the motion to vote for.
I'll second that.
So the motion's been made by Commissioner Lester Gooden. The motion is to...
Go with option D.
Accept option D. Motion was made by Commissioner Gooden, it was seconded by who? Commissioner Justin Miller. Any more discussion? Roll call when you're ready, Ms. Merrill.
Mickey.
Against.
Justin.
Ford.
Rod.
Against.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
At your convenience, come by my office and we can talk about your options and get you set up if you'd like to be. Okay? Thank you.
Item number 13. Consideration of approval of resolution 2020-02 allowing the Fintress County Library to apply for the Dollar General Literacy Grant for the FY 19-20. Ms. Conatsor, are you here? Explain that if you don't care.
The Dollar General Literacy Grant is the one that we usually apply for to fund summer reading program, because we don't take any money out of our budget to fund those programs. And in June, we have three programs per week. All the whole month of June, four different age groups for summer reading program.
Also says 100% match, no match from the county. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Benny Hughes. Second by Commissioner Mickey McDonald. Let Ms. Conatsor apply for this. Roll call, please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Ford.
Rod.
Ford.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
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 Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
10-4.
Motion passes, 10-4, none against. Item number 14. Consideration of approval of resolution 2020-03 allowing the Fintress County Board of Education to apply and accept a rural business grant administered by USDA ARD and to allow the Fintress County Director of Schools and the Fintress County Board of Education to execute any documents in regards to the grant. This consideration will be contingent upon approval of this resolution at the school board. Robert, would you like to say anything?
Mr. Jones is here.
Mr. Jones is here, I didn't see you come in, Mike, I'm sorry.
Come in late. This is basically the same grant York Institute got this year, I thought I'd have to wait till next year and get it. Senator Tracy is, he's in charge of USDA and he put me in on this grant this summer. And I went down there after Christmas and they said that, well, actually I went in January and they said, you know, there's a timeline to get it approved. And it's to buy welding equipment for shop classes. Basically the same grant that York Institute got. And our board will probably, will approve it Monday night, so as we put together our shop this summer, we got to do some work and then we can add more weld, I think four or five more weldings to add shop.
Chairman, I move with approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Larry Cooper to approve it, sent by Commissioner Lester Gooden. Any more discussion or any more questions from Mr. Jones? Roll call, vote please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Ford.
Rod.
Ford.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten-four, none against.
Motion passes. Ten-four, none against.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Jones. Thank you. Item number fifteen is the census presentation by Ms. Sherri Jackson.
My name is Sherri Jackson. I'm with the U.S. Census Bureau, and I grew up in Fentress County. The business card in the folder says Philadelphia, but that's where our regional office is. I live in, um, Cookeville now. My dad actually sat on the commission for several years in Fentress County, John Clark. But, um, I'm here to talk about the census, and, uh, every ten years, the Census Bureau counts everyone in the U.S. And that's always in the year ending in zero. So, twenty-twenty is our census year, this year. And our founding fathers, Article One, Section Two of the Constitution, so on the very first page of the Constitution, is when they determined that we would do a census count. And it was determined just to make sure that we had equal representation throughout the states. That was, uh, the original founding for the census. And, uh, it determines how many seats that we get in the House of Representatives, and currently, Tennessee has nine seats in the House. And that's, some of that information's on your one-on-one flyer, and also, the second flyer talks about the confidentiality of the census. So, under Title Thirteen of the U.S. Code, the Census Bureau cannot release any identifiable information about individuals, households, or businesses even to law enforcement agencies. The law states that the information collected may be used for statistical purposes and none other. And to support historical research, Title Forty-four of the U.S. Code allows that the National Archives release the records about the census after seventy-two years. So, if you, you know, done some research on your ancestors and everything, the most recent census information that you can look at is the nineteen forty census, because that's over seventy-two years old. So, this is something that we like to educate the public about, uh... But, this census is the first time that you can respond online, by phone, or paper questionnaire. And the way that's gonna work, this census, and this flyer about how we invite people to respond, on the back of that, it gives you a timeline. So, mid-March, every household in your county will get an invitation to respond to the census. And it's an invitation that's gonna have a GEO code with your address code on it and information that ties that to your address. And if you respond online, or you can call in your response, then you're done with the census. If you don't, you'll get a paper questionnaire in about a month. You'll get a few reminders after that original invitation to respond. You'll get a couple of postcards and some reminder letters. And if you haven't responded in about a month, you'll get a paper questionnaire at home. And if you don't respond, uh, on the paper form, then that's when we have to knock on the doors, and that's why we're doing a lot of hiring in your county and a lot of recruiting recently. But for me, the most important part of the census is the funding that comes back to our counties and our states. And, uh, six hundred and seventy-five billion dollars are distributed back to the states, and it's all dependent upon census date and the census count. And when you're applying for grants and everything, you know that the Census Bureau is the gold standard for information when it comes to information about our states and our populations. So, that, uh, data's used often when you're applying for grants and things. One thing about the census is we are really working to partner with the schools in our counties. We started at the, we started with our highest elected official in the county, and we put together a complete count committee. And that committee, uh, is formed from several members in your county. But what we're trying to do is make sure we get a full count of everybody in Fentress County. And, uh, one of our most missed populations is our children under five. So, we partner with the Headstarts and everything, but when you think about it, if a child is missed, that's starting kindergarten in twenty-twenty, they'll be starting high school in twenty-thirty. So, that's ten years of misfunding for that child, you know, for schools and roads and hospitals, and... Everybody knows that Fentress County would like to have a hospital, so, um, it's just so important that we, that you guys, you know, you're the trusted voices in your districts and everything, and you'll help us get the word out how important it is, and it's just right around the corner in March, uh, that everyone can respond mid-March. It's so, so important. So, any questions about the census?
Have you hired everybody yet?
No, we're just starting to hire. As a matter of fact, the work starts, uh, the real work starts in like February. We start training a lot of the folks, because we... Most of the jobs will be the people knocking on doors for the people that do not respond.
Are, are there rates for what they get paid, public information or?
Yes. It is on our website. It's fourteen dollars an hour and fifty-eight cents a mile for Fentress County. You can click on your county. It's different in some of the counties. Some counties get more.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask. I, I saw a higher rate today. I'm just curious to what the rate for Fentress County was.
Yeah, it's fourteen and fifty-eight cents a mile.
Why is it much lower than, is it because of the, the smaller population, or?
It is. They kind of do pay surveys and everything like that when they're looking at individual counties, and that has, that's part of the reason. Fentress is gonna be serviced out of an office out of Shelbyville, Tennessee. And some of the offices are serviced out of the Knoxville, uh, Census Office and the Nashville Census Office, and they tend to get paid a little more.
A little bit more, so, I'm just curious.
I know, I know. There's some of the counties that are being paid quite well.
Nineteen fifty.
Yeah. Knoxville is, is paid that. We were in the Knoxville office today. They had their open house, but...
How many people you gonna need?
We're not sure. It really depends on how many people respond online or by phone. We're gonna have a real accurate update of which areas of the county are responding and which are not. We're gonna know that in real time. So, we're gonna be able to look at that and say, you know, this area's not responding. We need to focus on this area and maybe get the word out more, or that sort of thing.
Will there be a contact, uh, on the radio or whatever, who they can contact to apply for this? Does it have to be online, or?
On, on the jobs. It is all online, because it's a lot of computer work this time, and it's census.gov forward slash jobs. You can just, you know, look on Census twenty-twenty. It's actually on those folders too. And there should be quite a few, um, there should be quite a few flyers and stuff throughout the county. We have actually reached our recruiting goal in this county, and that's one of the few that we have. We're at a hundred percent of our recruiting goal, so there have been quite a few people applied with this already.
Any more questions from Ms. Jackson?
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Please let everyone know how important it is. Thank you.
Item number sixteen is the consideration of the Fentress County Road List for twenty-twenty. Mr. Joey Reagan. He's having questions on that. Y'all have a road list there in your folder? Does anyone have any questions on it for Joey about any of the roads, or? Anything whatsoever?
Have there been any major changes?
Uh, some of the gravel roads have been tarred and chipped.
No, I mean, in the names, sir.
There's, uh, added, uh, Foxup Church. I can't remember. I'll, uh, get you the summary of all of them.
When you have a road change, uh, name like that, do you distribute that to like, uh, ambulance service, fire department?
Yeah, that goes to nine-one-one.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Motion by Commissioner Robert Cooper to approve as presented.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mickey McDonald. Roll call vote, please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten-four, none against.
Motion passes. Item number seventeen, consideration of some surplus property from the County Court Clerk's office. Ms. Marrow, is this asked, asking for permission to put this to surplus property and offer it for sale?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Lester Gooden.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robert Cooper. Roll call vote, please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten-four, none against. Item number eighteen. We just had twenty-four, so we're getting there, folks. Bear with it. Item number eighteen, consideration of approval of the Intergovernmental Cooperative Purchasing Agreement with National Purchasing Partners, known as NPP. Tyler, would you care to speak on that?
This is a purchasing cooperative similar to the SAVIC that we passed for the, uh, I believe, Heart Monitor Lift Systems for the ambulance. Pretty similar, but what our intentions are is they can get us pretty significant discount on turnout gear for the fire department. And what our plans are is to use what's left of that grant, that CDBG grant, on turnout gear.
Forty-four thousand five hundred dollars.
Forty-four thousand, five...
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four. Thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars left.
What was the percentage of savings on some of those gears? Was it thirty-one percent?
I believe that one that we, that I talked to, that gentleman about, was thirty-five percent off their, their listed price, their catalog listed price.
The good thing about this is that we piggyback off of other agencies that's already done that. Like, uh, the one that we got was, uh, Pickett County. They just got done doing Pickett County and Van Buren County.
The way it works is, it's, it's a purchasing cooperative, so it basically gets other government entities that have already bid these projects, and it gathers everything in. Somebody's bid it and signed a contract in it, and we basically piggyback, and you piggyback through this purchasing cooperative.
Could, uh...
By doing this, we piggyback without having to go through a lot of approvals and a lot of time spent bidding stuff.
Since this money's for turnout gear, will somebody define turnout gear for the public, please?
Turnout gear would be a helmet, a jacket, a hood, pants, suspenders.
Boots.
Boots. And those are not cheap. I mean, a good set for one person's two grand. So...
And I think our Fentress County's turnout gear is pretty aged, right? Overall, what you hear one.
A lot of bobbleheads back there. Everybody done this.
When? And they're, you know, they're actually outdated.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Lester Gooden to approve, seconded by Commissioner Kim Davison. Roll call vote, please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Pass.
Wade.
Four.
Motion passes. Item number nineteen. Consideration of the following budget amendments. The first one is the senior citizens. And...
That's her monthly budget amendment. That's, um, her donations that she's received for the nutrition. We have to send a check for that through the area agency, and, uh... Then her fundraising money for the center.
Motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Larry Cooper to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rod Williams. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Motion passes. Next one is for the jail, a hundred and five dollars and eighty-eight cents.
That's reimbursement for medical services. You should have attached check and receipt of overpayment for, uh, inmates' medical services.
Motion to approve.
Second by Commissioner Benny Hughes. They're approved, second by...
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lester Gooden. Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten-four, none against.
Ten-four, none against. Motion passes. The next item is sheriff's insurance recovery, two thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars and eighty-three cents.
This is for, uh, excuse me, uh, rec, uh, insurance recovery for a rec patrol car to go in to fix that patrol car.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Lester Gooden to approve, seconded by Commissioner Leon Stepp. Any further discussion on it? Roll call, please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten-four, none against. Motion passes.
The last budget amendment is for the Health Department for ten thousand dollars.
This is a grant, this actually is for the Fit Fentress Committee. They've turned in some kind of plan and received some, uh, there's some diabetes awareness, and a lot of projects they're working on with this ten thousand dollars, but this puts it into a Health Department line so that they can start on those projects.
This is all run through the Health Department, correct?
Yep.
Do I hear a motion?
I move.
Commissioner Justin Miller made the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robert Cooper. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Pass.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Motion passes. Nine-four, one passing. Item number twenty. This is a discussion in regard to a request for the Fentress County Commission to consider passing a resolution to carry a Fentress County, a Second Amendment Sanctuary County. And this is just a discussion. There'll be no resolution passed tonight. That will come up in next month if the commission decides to do so. Mr. Roger Burks.
I appreciate the time tonight, but I do, um, I do ask that, that each one of you seriously consider adopting, adopting this resolution. Uh, that will, that will place our county on the list with other counties in Tennessee and, and also counties, uh, in states all across the nation, declaring that we are a Second Amendment county. Uh, if you're not aware of these red flag laws that are being passed in a lot of states, and actually, two of these laws have been introduced, or two of these bills have been introduced in Tennessee this year. So, uh, it's, to me, it's really a no-brainer. This is, has, i- it's, it's not opinions. It's, it's all about following the rule of the law in this nation. And according to our Constitution, Second Amendment, the Bill of Rights, is, is, uh, gives us the right to bear arms, uh, and, and that right not to be infringed upon. So, I, I would ask that, that, that you guys really consider, uh, making this move for Fentress County, and let's get ahead of the game. Last year, they introduced the red flag laws in Tennessee, and our governor said that Tennessee wasn't ready for this. But we never know if, if that will be the same again this year. So, I'm, I'm asking, I'm asking you, the representatives of Fentress County, you're, you're the voice of this county, that, that you do your duty and you stand for our Constitution, uh, regardless of what our federal government may decide to do. federal government may decide to do.
Any questions? Did you want to ask Roger at this time? How many in the state have passed?
It's been a couple of weeks. Some have passed, some have, are on the list to be approaching their commission, maybe in the next meeting, but I believe that number, counting the ones that are approaching the commission, is somewhere in the thirty-five and forty. And the first county to pass, if I'm not mistaken, in Tennessee was Polk County, and they passed this, I believe it was either March or April of two thousand and nineteen.
The last thing I saw, it looked like the majority of the counties were in east Tennessee, is that correct?
That's right. That's correct. And I'm sure that's, that's cause of the bleed over from Virginia. Most of you are very aware of what's going on in Virginia, and what you're finding, the trends, the trends is not necessarily the people. The trends is the legislative, the legislative body are passing these red flag laws, but the majority of the people, especially in the rural areas, are not in favor of this at all. And it's in direct violation, not only of our second amendment and our fourteenth amendment, but it's also in violation of our Tennessee state constitution. So, and I'm quite, I would never speak for anyone, but I'm quite sure that our law enforcement in this county would not even fulfill that mandate even if it did happen in this county. You know, our founders, they developed a, a law or a constitution, and when Benjamin Franklin left after they'd finished the constitution, and he was leaving, there was a lady by the name of Elizabeth Powell, and she asked Mr. Franklin, she said, "Mr. Franklin, what kind of government have you left us with?" And he answered her, "A republic, if you can keep it." The difference between a democracy and a republic, a democracy, the majority rules. A republic is we follow a law that is already written. It is the duty of our elected representatives to uphold our constitution. And that's all I'm asking you to do. I'm not asking you to step outside of the law. I'm just asking you to do what each one of you have been sworn to do, to follow the law of our US Constitution and our state constitution.
Anything else for Mr. Roger? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just come to the front, please, sir.
I didn't come here tonight to speak on the second amendment.
We're proud you're here.
But I have a vast amount of experience with the second amendment. I was in law enforcement for many, 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 many years in a large, major city.
And your name?
My name's Gary Johnston.
Johnston. Gary?
I've made thousands and thousands and thousands of arrests for carrying concealed weapons over the course of my career. And I started out in law enforcement as a young, not very intelligent officer, thinking one way, and by the time my career had got ten years under my belt, I'd completely changed my mind on the second amendment. And I can talk to any one of you up here and explain to you the evolution of thinking, and probably convince any of you that aren't for the second amendment to change your mind. So anybody that would like to pick my brain and my vast intelligence and experience, I can be made available. But I didn't come here for that, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Bobby Nolan, I live in Allard. And, Mr. Burks, I totally agree with you. However, I'm against us labeling ourselves as a sanctuary county. There's repercussions to that. The repercussions started, sanctuary started with the immigrants. It was sanctuary cities for immigrants. When that first started, the President of the United States says, "No more federal funding for those cities." Do we want to take that risk? I mean, it's not out there, he's not doing it right now, but a new president could come into the office and say, "Hey, they're a sanctuary gun control city. I'm not federally funding them. It's up to you, but do we want to take that risk?" And there's a perceived threat that somebody's going to come and take our weapons. Well, we're from the south, nobody's going to come and take our weapons, that'd be a bloodbath. But, in any case, if they were to try that, there's two scenarios that I think that would happen. If we label ourselves as a sanctuary county, they're not dummies. The military would come in force, they would shut down the sheriff's office, and they would put up roadblocks, and they would go around house to house and confiscate our weapons. You don't think that would happen? Ask Germany. The other scenario, and I'm a military tactician, I've advised generals in combat scenarios. Another scenario is, we don't identify ourselves as a sanctuary city, but we still carry on the same thoughts of being a sanctuary city. If, worst-case scenario, if somebody were to come to try to take our weapons, the federal government, if they were to come to try to take our weapons, first they're going to notify county executor, the mayor, and the sheriff. We got a sheriff that I'm going to stand behind. I don't believe he's going to stand and let anybody come in and take our weapons. I'll stand behind him, but the thing is, they would give them advance notice. We're coming. We identify ourselves as sanctuary city, they want to come and take, sanctuary cities would be their first primary target, so they can set a precedence for everybody else watching out. I'm against sanctuary cities, or county, for us, for that reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any more questions? Well, I would ask that the commission get all the pros and cons that they can on this issue before it's brought up to a resolution. At next month's meeting. Item number twenty-one. A discussion in regard to a request for the Fentress County Commission to consider passing a resolution on refugee resettlement. As we said before, there'll be no resolution passed tonight, this here is just information gathering. Someone coming forward to speak on that.
I supplied Amanda Hicks a six-page document that I wrote, and she possibly gave it to all the commissioners, so I'm not going to read it. I also supplied her another four-part document on exempting the Fentress County Commission from refugee resettlement with a stake. I also supplied her another document talking about our governor, a governor that I helped put into office with an organization that I ran until I moved up here. And I'm sorely disappointed in them, I'll be honest with you. And anybody that has any questions at the commission, I'm not going to take any more of your time. You can reach me, Amanda has my information, has my phone number. I'd be glad to meet with any of you on any of these documents that I've produced to you. Does anybody at this time have any questions?
Now, you sent this in to our office on the sixteenth of January?
Yes.
The day before, federal court in Maryland issued a preliminary injunction on January the fifteenth that stopped implementation of the executive order until a court determines its constitution. Do you have one of these?
No.
Okay, I'll let you have mine. You can read it if you're...
This is the one you probably...
Uh, don't know if I have that one.
The official one from Kansas County Services Association.
This is it?
Yes.
This is it?
Yeah.
This is it?
Thank you.
CTA has provided some information that's in your packet also.
So all you commissioners have this also in your packet to read and study also. Yes, sir, thank you. Our next one is item number twenty-two. Consideration of a request for, to close a portion of Deer Fork Road. I'm going to call for a five-minute recess so we can kind of stretch our legs, because this might take a pretty good while on this, if y'all don't appear. We'll call the meeting back into order. I'd like to make one statement. For either of the resolutions presented by the citizens tonight to be on the next agenda, a commissioner must request for it to be on the February agenda for it to be on, for it to be on there. So, if you want it presented, get in contact with one of your commissioners, I'll let them more or less sponsor this, and that's how we'll get it on the agenda. Okay. Consideration of a request to close a portion of Deer Fork Road. Who's up for it? Just when you come up? No, just come right ahead. Just, let the commissioners know if you, if you're for or against it, please state, please state your name.
My name's Angela O'Turk Smith, I own the property, the road busts, every bit of the property.
And this has been on the agenda... No, it came up, this came up in August the fourteenth, and so it's been out there, it's been to the planning commission a couple times, I'm thinking.
Yes, sir.
And it's been up here once, and so we need to put this to rest tonight.
Okay. At one of the planning meetings, one of the planners had contacted TDUAC very, did not give specifics. TDUAC said if it was just crossing a river, they wouldn't really like that, but driving through a river would be a big deal. To cross this river, which is what I'm gathering is the problem, because the road itself just drives my property, nobody has really any need to be there. TDUAC said driving through the property would present a problem. You have to drive several hundred yards down the river and back up the river to cross. It is not just a random little crossing. In light of you saying we need to resolve this tonight, I have been in touch with the National Forestry Service. They are concerned about sediment disturbance and wildlife, or river life problems. They have referred to TDUAC and also TWRA. TDUAC said they will send a representative from TWRA to the property to do an evaluation or to give you an official review, if you would like that. In that case, I would ask that if you would like that review from them, that we table or defer this discussion until the next meeting. But I have already given all my reasons for wanting it closed. We've had too many problems, there really is no reason for it to be open. We've had, if you drive down the road and you stop, no matter which side of your car you get on, you're on private property. We've had a lot of destruction, we've had animals shot, and it's just, it's become a huge problem. My grandmother, years ago, wanted it closed but was afraid to do anything because the type of problems she was having with a lot of drug and alcohol use and burning of things down there, she was afraid someone would burn her barns. So, she had kind of, she was there alone, and she kind of put it on the back burner. But like I say, I have been in touch with TDUAC and TWRA. TDUAC said they will send a TWRA rep if we would like that.
Are all the commissioners familiar with what we're talking about here? Pretty much so.
From what I've talked to other people that live in the area about, but other than that.
All of you are pretty up...
Did we vote on this once before?
No.
Okay.
Similar thing.
So if there's any questions that you want any clarity, now'd be the time, any of y'all, to ask whoever's speaking here tonight. So we've got...
Any question?
Go ahead, go ahead. Is this at the end of the Elmo Up Church?
Yes, sir, Elmo Up Church is my grandmother.
And then there's a stiff curve to the left, and the road shoots this way?
Red Creek Road goes around. The section I want closed is from the end, from the corner there down to the river. The other side I have no interest in, that the other people that are contesting it are having, I have no, I think they were thinking I had an interest in that, I don't. I just want, from that corner to the river is my property, and I'm having all kinds of problems. And really, in all honesty, seventy-five percent of the time, you cannot cross that river anyway. If you went down there right now, there's no way you could even cross it in a tractor, it's, the water's so high. So, I've had trees cut, I've had things burned. It's a possibility that somebody could go down. We picked up hypodermic needles, beer cans, beer bottles, I mean, you know, if somebody sets that place on fire, my whole life goes.
So if this section of the road's closed, how far out of the way that people did use this road? How far out of their way are they going to have to go to get where they need to go?
Couple minutes, five minutes, ten minutes.
How many miles?
Um, David, how many miles is it from there? I know we've checked from our house to go to Forest Store, it's quicker to go, oh, it's still, you know, already, it's not...
I did, six miles.
Six miles.
One way, five miles the other way.
You can go either way around.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One mile, go across the river, six miles down this way.
So, yeah, we're looking at a difference of four or five miles, that somebody would have to try.
Is that one way or around?
One way.
One way.
Right.
So this has been the county road for many, many years.
Yes, it is, it has, yes, it has.
Do we have the minutes from the planning commission available?
Can you show me on this minute?
I'd like to...
The planning commission...
They voted five.
They voted to close the road.
But Larry...
Five.
Okay, let's see.
Hi, Larry. Highway Department.
But now, the...
Deer Fork.
Okay.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, Red Creek Road.
Said no not to close it.
This is, this is my... It's right here, from here.
I'm just curious, what the reasoning was, that they voted five.
This right here is the old boys' house, so it'd be from here to here.
It's, they're going to close. So if they have a church loose, they are going to have to come here to get, or if they're on Red Creek Road, they have to come all the way to the mountain.
Or they can come the other way. This is all residential, this is not...
Unless we close it.
I mean, really nothing there to come to, unless you're on Forest Store, here is, they don't have Forest Stores, I think, where most of the...
Let's get back, let's get back to where we were.
Where's the, where are they going to close that?
She's wanting to close from here to here.
Just the one section on my property, not the other section.
Let me ask one question in there, we'll let somebody else speak. Don't want to rush the topic, but what is...
I've said all I need to say, you know, but...
So if this here, say if they do close this, how will people get, say if I want to go down there and go swimming, how will I get to that part of the creek if I want to go down there? Or will that be completely closed off?
Well, if you go down there to go swimming, you're on private property anyway.
Not in the creek, I won't be, in the river?
Yes, sir. According to, talking to the TSC Department of Environment and Conservation, they said according to my plot, according to what I gave them from you guys, that on our section, we own to the middle because the waters vary so much.
To the middle.
And that the potters would own to the other middle of the river.
So if that, so if that there's the case, you could actually go down there and put up a...
You'd put above the middle.
You'd put up a half of a dam, dam right there and close off half of the Wolf River then, couldn't you? So is it Wolf?
Well, what they said is if you're on the river, like if somebody's kayaking, it's not my problem because they're on the water, but if you are actually on the ground, it's confusing to me, but that's what I was told by TDUAC.
But it's a, it's a road, county road, that goes to the river. That is used by people. So once you get to the river, if you are on the river, that is still public property.
Commissioner Miller.
With all due respect to you saying that the river is private property, whenever I...
No, sir, not the river, just the property.
Well, yeah, but you said that, you did say the river.
The river, right.
The ground over the water?
Right.
You closed on it.
They're saying because the water recedes, so property line goes to the mid.
If I, if I may ask my question.
Yes.
Whenever I talked to TWRA about requiring, acquiring a truck stamp in Wolf River, they said that you would have to have it because the people that owned that particular property because the people that owned that particular property I was fishing on, on the water, the people may own the bed, but they also own the water. So I don't see how you can restrict anybody from swimming in the water.
I guarantee you, somebody that's fishing in Wolf River that was standing on their property that they own fishing in the river couldn't use a landowner's tag. They'd have to buy a stamp.
Exactly.
They'd get a ticket.
Yeah. What I was told is the water, like if you're kayaking or whatever, it's, you know, I can't do anything, you know, which I wouldn't either. And I don't care for people to go down there and do things. I have no problem with that. We've just had so many problems. We've had animals shot. I mean, I can't even tell you all the things. I went through all this with the planning commission and everything already, so I'm not going to go through it again. But I just would like to request that if you are undecided and you are not sure that you would either table the discussion or defer the vote until TDEC sends out a TWRA representative to evaluate.
Well, we've been on this for five months.
Right, they said...
So that's just giving sufficient time for anyone to come and make any kind of...
Well, I didn't know any of this until, I didn't know it would even go to the commission meeting, so I was not going to do any, you know, pursue it. I figured since TDEC had already said they didn't really agree with it, that it probably wouldn't get passed anyway. So I was just kind of going on there, I bet.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else on the pro side to have it closed?
John, John, it's from 895 Ascibady Road.
Go to the microphone if you don't care, sir.
Yeah.
And you are for closing or against closing?
No, I don't want to close it all.
Go right ahead.
And if you close that road, that makes our road part of our house. Talk about a dead end. That road's over 100 years old. That is a county road underneath the water, always crossed. All the way to Reed Creek, over to Deer Fork Road. The road here we're on is Deer Ford Road. The county made a mistake on their map. They're calling it Deer Fork. It's Deer Ford Road. Ford the river.
Yes, sir.
And that's why. And the people here, all neighbors of mine, and they don't want the road closed either. Nobody down there. I had a petition of 70 people, signed a petition. They do not want the road closed.
They have a copy of it, yes, sir.
Thank you. I didn't know I had it. But you people, thank you.
Anyone else? State your name, please.
I have Kenny Beatty. I lived down... All my life. It's 70 years old next to my... And I've never seen, now, this problem that there's a problem tonight. And the people that, on one side of the river, on property on both sides, on both sides of the river. And if you close the road, they're going to have to drive all the way to the Palma House Schoolhouse and go around. Or go all the way around the Red Hill Road to go around. But now, all they've got to do is just cross the river, and they're at their property. Because some of those farmers own the property on both sides of the road.
So they'd have to drive their tractors all the way around?
They have to have their tractors and all their farm equipment. And you don't have a tractor powered access on highland. It won't last.
And if you had to drive all the way around, that's five or six miles around the water.
And you're talking about you could cross it for this certain time of year. Bill Pierce, he's got problems on both sides of the road. He feeds his cattle during the winter. About these people, man, now he crosses that river. Yes, sir. So I don't have a lot of problems.
I did have an agreement with Mr. Pierce that he, that if he do close the road, that he has access to it. I've already given him an order statement here that he is the only farmer that uses that road.
Oh, God, maybe his people...
Just one moment, ma'am. Just let you come back up here in a moment.
Like John said, the road's been there for 100 years. I mean, what's the problem?
So do y'all use it for vehicles or just farm equipment?
Well, you know, you ought to... You want to go down there swimming, or you want to go down there, take your kids down there on Sunday evening, whatever, stuff like that, but...
But you can take a regular vehicle across?
You can't take a vehicle now, like she says. You can't take a vehicle across it ever pay of the year. Or going over there for fiddle, gun, and feed, whatever. Four hundred tractors and a property.
Thank you, Kenny. Anyone else?
If I may say something, I've actually, I've actually had several other farmers approach me at my place of work even, urging me why not to close this road due to the fact that it was going to be more of an inconvenience than anything for them to, you know, transport their stuff with their tractors and this, that, and the other, so.
I have too.
And for one, I've read this document, and the road supervisor has actually stated that he's against the acceptance of it.
Mr. Joy, would you care to come up and elaborate on this just for a minute, please, sir?
My opinion, the use of the highway department and the farmer's use and the community's concern, we need to keep it open.
Is this a road that you, when you get a chance, I know it's just a road to go down to the river, but this is still a road that you do work on maybe once or twice a year or something or other, or?
Low maintenance.
Low maintenance, that's...
It's poor condition.
Okay.
It's listed as low.
So is there anything, other than farmland, is there anything down through there? Either side of the road, of the river? No houses or anything?
No.
I'd like to add too that, I mean, even if you are just driving five or six miles on a tractor on that curvy road, that's dangerous. You get run over.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, from the backside, if you're on a tractor.
Yeah.
And I actually live in Palma, and know a lot of the farmers down there. And I understand your concerns wholeheartedly, wholeheartedly. We have a cemetery just up the road from our house, and we walk from there, and I find hypodermic needles there all the time and beer bottles. It's a common concern. But in my opinion, closing this road down to the farmers that use it is not going to remedy that problem. That's a bigger problem than this road.
In response to that, I have more than lost of the same agreement with any farmer that would like to use that road. I have no problem with that. I have a problem with the red track as people are saying they're going to go down there and they want to swim. They want to do, if you stop on that river and you get out of your car, you are on my property. There is nowhere to stop and get out. Get out of your car, you are on my property.
Joey, you got, Joey, you got anything else, Joey?
How much land is on either side of the road? Long as it's county, Joey. How wide is that county road?
The roadway.
The roadway's rule of thumb is 20 foot from center of the road.
So ma, basically, how much of that? How much of that ties into their property? How much from the road to, how much off the road?
Forty feet.
Forty. Forty foot wide.
Off, I mean, off the side of the road, there's 40 feet.
That's my sense. From the center.
From the center. So from the edge of the road, how much would you say?
10 foot.
In other words, somebody would have enough room to get out of their vehicle and step onto the grass and not be on somebody's property?
Where the road surface is poor condition, you probably can't make, two cars can't make.
But it's still 40 feet.
But you'd have a surplus of actual roadway.
If we wanted to go down there and lighten it out?
To 40 feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, but then you wouldn't have room for drainage and all that stuff, right? I mean, if that was installed, but right now, you would have room for...
But he don't have room for that.
So if you've got 40-foot swath, and you've got 10, 12 feet, so you've got basically 15 feet on both sides of the road, that should be roadway. Never tires.
If we wish to keep it as a county road, do we need any action on this, Jimmy?
Yes, you need to vote on it. Yep, you're either going to close it.
It's already, it's already a road, isn't it?
What you're voting on is to close the road or leave the road open. It's went through, Joey, twice. It's went through the planning commission twice.
The planning commission has voted to close it. I would like to make the motion that we throw it open.
I'd like to make a motion that we keep it as a county road and keep it open.
And let's all be clear, because I got to jump in and give you the legal two cents, is that that road ends where it ends. The county is not responsible for anybody going across the water. We don't tell you, you can or you can't, because our responsibility ends where that road ends. We dang sure don't need TDEC up here saying, oh, y'all letting everybody cross the river. No, sir. But I'm just saying, we don't want them saying that the county is letting people cross there. That's not the county's deal. Our road ends where it ends. And nothing you all do tonight will change that.
Well, how is it stated on the books now as a county road? I mean, does it indicate?
It is, it is on the county that has to set the roads. The road that's on our side and that's on the other side.
One should have read Deer Ford Road. I think we've had a couple of those that we've found lately that are mistakes. Just when 911 did the road list. But at any rate, I just want to be clear that we are not in any way, Joey, expanding our road privileges, rightaways through that river, because...
So do we need, do we need to ask Joey, road supervisor, to put a sign up if it stays open? No outlet. Dead end at the river or something else? I don't know.
But there's road on that side.
Well, the point is that if all they're wanting is to cross the river, why not just close it?
Well, because they can't get across it if it's closed.
Well, and if TDEC is involved, they're not going to cross it anyway. So, you know, that was my point, but it's...
There's lots of roads that cross rivers. I work eight counties in Upper Cumberland, and there's quite a few roads that do border.
Ma'am, I could be wrong, which I'm wrong a lot, and I'll be the first one to admit it. But I don't know if TDEC can come in and say, we're going to close the road for a year or keep it open.
Is this the same road we're talking about? Deer Ford and Deer Fork? TDEC, y'all, Texas, in charge of that. Deer Ford, too.
But it's still a county road. Took the river from there.
Any commissioner have any more questions, Primo?
I got a question for attorney.
Okay.
I'm just up here trying to keep us out of the liability portion. If what's in the river is not our deal...
Let me give you a question. Top there. We vote to keep this road open to the river, a river. And future, TDEC gets involved, and they say, we can't do this. What's the harm? Can we not back out and do something else? Plan B down the road?
Yes, and I'll read you the TDEC statement on water. In the state of Tennessee, the state owns the water. Tennessee Department of Environmental Conservation, TDEC, owns most of every drop of water that falls is under their purview. The state claims control over any water that will or might connect to other sources such as a stream or subterranean, aquifers, or any such situation. Unless it's an isolated pool or pond that's sealed from grain seepage or overflow, it is subject to state review. So basically, y'all let them deal with the river. What we're dealing with is just the road. I want to be clear that what we're dealing with is just the road.
And this is the Deer Ford or the Deer Fork part of it?
So my understanding is, the board, we do act tonight. We can back back out of it if we have.
Always bring it back up.
You're going to revell on that?